All right, folks, if I could get everybody's attention here real quick, we'll get this show on the road. Well, good evening. Welcome to White Bear Township's 2024 Annual Meeting. I'm Pat Christoffersen, the clerk treasurer here at the township. Just want to let everybody know that this evening's meeting is being cable cast live on YouTube and is available there for any viewings anytime that you want. Tonight's meeting is not, repeat, not a town board meeting, but a meeting of the people. Town board staff and town consultants are present as a resource should you have any questions that could be directed towards them during the discussion this evening. Main part of the presentation is the proposed preliminary tax levy for 2025. When it comes to a vote, only town residents have the privilege of voting. Since the meeting is not a town board meeting, the meeting is run by a moderator rather than a chairperson. So at this time, so we can get things going here legally and properly, I would ask for a volunteer as a moderator for this evening's festivities. Got one here, Bob Kermis. Anybody else want to get out there? No? Okay. So at this time, Bob Kermis has volunteered to be our meeting moderator, and I would ask for a nomination from the floor for Bob. I get a second. Second? All in favor? All right. Your show, Mr. Kermis. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you all. Just in case you overlooked it, our agenda's on the table by the door in the back, so if you haven't gotten an agenda yet, go ahead and grab one. The... Just a couple of things, housekeeping issues. We'll follow a modified set of Robert's Rules as we conduct the meeting, so we'll be looking for motions and seconds. Like Pat said, it's a resident's town meeting, so you all are the ones that are going to be making the motions and conducting the proceedings, so... Pat said that the proceedings are being recorded, both on the tape, but we do have a recorder over there in the corner. She's listening, so if you could help her out, and if you do have something to say, please identify yourself with your address in the township. Okay, I think that covers the housekeeping stuff unless I've overlooked something. Pat will let me know. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we do have a parliamentarian. I mentioned Robert's Rules of Order. I'm no expert, but we do have an expert that is, and our town attorney Chad Clements is the parliamentarian. He'll be helping us out if issues come up. Okay, so the first item that we have to deal with on the agenda, or the next item, is to approve the meeting minute agenda for this evening. So we need a motion to approve the agenda as accepted or presented. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Hearing no suggested changes or amendments, I'll call it a vote. Those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? The agenda's approved. Next item, we need to approve the 2023 annual meeting minutes. They have been posted online at the township website, and did we have... Yeah, we have copies on the table also. So we need a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes from the 2023 annual meeting. Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, we do have at least one elected official. Sheriff Fletcher is here. Was John Choi gonna be here? Oh, okay. We will. Okay, Sheriff, you got here first, so if you'd like to visit with us.
Well, first of all, thanks for having us, and I do want to start by saying thank you for being one of those communities that has supported us for so many years and supported the men and women of the sheriff's office. You know, I had this job back in 95, and I've always felt that White Bear Township understood the tough job that law enforcement has and appreciated the men and women of our department. I can tell you, last night, there was an Oakdale officer that was fired upon and thankfully not hit. Our SWAT team, and Kyle, I don't know if you were on that call, but he's on our SWAT team as well. Our SWAT team responded with our barricade, St. Paul SWAT team, Washington County SWAT team. It was a collaborative effort, and finally, after gassing the suspect out of the house, he did come out. But this comes on the heels of one of our deputies getting shot at here 10 days ago. And of course, these were in St. Paul, not in White Bear Township. But the job is getting increasingly worse. The Burnsville officers that were killed, of course. We've had a number of Wisconsin officers killed, and of course Fargo and St. Cloud. So the bottom line is assaults against police officers are up three times what they were five years ago. And it's getting hard for us actually to recruit officers in this environment. But this community has always been so supportive and gracious and appreciative of our efforts. I just wanted to thank you for that. We have had great success here in the township. Crime is as low as any major suburban community around. And I have to tell you, the thefts have dropped dramatically. Catalytic converters have dropped, and thankfully, because of the new law requiring, you know, auto parts places, salvage places, of recording the number and who actually brought it in. That law's been very helpful. Auto thefts have dropped dramatically. We're down 40% this year, and last year, we were down 45%. And I will tell you right now, as I stand here in Ramsey County, we will probably have one carjacking every 10 days. That's the frequency of our carjackings in Ramsey County, which we're very proud of, because to be honest with you, three years ago, that wasn't the case. In Minneapolis, however, they will have one carjacking every day. Hey, John, I'm stalling for you. In Minneapolis, they're gonna have one carjacking every day. And so we have made extensive efforts. Actually, John and I partnered up on this program, working with the county attorney's office, to have a three-pronged approach of actually aggressively pursuing our carjackers and auto thieves. Once they're caught, and I always tell people, you have to catch them before you can help them, because there are a lot of people that want to help them, and that's great. We love that effort. Some need to be incarcerated, but a lot can change their ways. And so once we catch them, we have ambassadors and navigators that are reaching out to these young kids and helping them change course. And we have, of course, a new program that we're trying to have treatment houses, intensive treatment houses in Ramsey County, that these kids can get treatment for... Mostly, it's their drug addiction, depression, all the chemical issues that they have on top of their mental health issues. So John's been very helpful in getting grants from a variety of sources. Sheriff's Office has benefited from the Department of Commerce grants. And I do want to introduce two of our CAT team members, Kyle Williams, if you'd just stand up for a minute there, and Darren McDonald. Darren, they're out there every day. We have a team of 10 people that are out there every day working to try to catch them, and I have to tell you, this team of 10 deputies has arrested hundreds, hundreds of auto thieves in the last three years. Just amazing work. So a quick round of applause for those two guys there, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. And Andre Jerome is one of our K-9 officers there. His partner, Sonny, is out in the parking lot. We were gonna bring him in, but we knew that some... Pardon me? Maybe at the end of the... Well, we might not be around. He's gotta go back to work. They're all working. But anyhow, our patrol guys out here do an amazing job. Anybody remember the name Thurmer? Well, now, Norm Thurmer III and Billy Thurmer work here as well in this area. They're off tonight. But their father, Norm Thurmer II, actually is the one that talked me into running for sheriff back in 1994 when he ran. So the Thurmers, of course, have a long legacy here as well, so thank you, gentlemen. So the good news is here in White Bear Township, things are great. The bad news is what happens elsewhere in the metro area does eventually affect us. And I have to tell you, the biggest problem that I see on the horizon is that the Minneapolis Police Department is so short-staffed that they cannot combat the crime that they have. Keep in mind, when I was at the St. Paul Police Department years ago, they had 1,100 police officers in Minneapolis. For the most part, they were always between 850 and 900, even the last five or six years. There was a law passed that they have to maintain at least 725. Right now, they have about 525. So they're 200 under what their charter says they have to have, and they're 300 under where they should be, probably in the 825. It's very difficult to police a city like Minneapolis without those resources. And that's why I mentioned, they have a carjacking every day. They have, you know, I have to be honest, they have 20 auto thefts every day in their town. And we're constantly going and helping them. They're coming to our side of the river. But for the most part, because of the proactive approach that we have on our side of the river, we've had tremendous success in reducing that. And John, I think I mentioned before you came in, it's a 40% reduction this year on top of a 45% reduction last year. So with that, I'm just gonna pause for questions about crime or anything you'd like to know. Right. Well, unable's an interesting question. There is a red flag law that's passed, and if people apply relatives or the sheriff's office... Not the red... Removing the guns? Yeah, we don't... At this point, it's supposed to be voluntary. The judge orders them to turn the guns in, and we go to the house and attempt to acquire them or set up a time to acquire them. But if we don't get the guns, we have to prove, A, that we know they have them. That's step one, which is problematic for us. But have you had an experience where you were troubled? Yeah? Yes. Well, that's the big problem. That's the big problem. We hate to go forcibly into a house that we know there's a guy with a gun that's not gonna want to give them up. We have this happen on a regular basis. There was an incident in St. Anthony the other day where we had an order to civilly commit this person to a hospital in Anoka, locked up. And we knew that he had some weapons, and so the question is, how do you go in and civilly commit a person? And so fortunately, we had actually scheduled our SWAT team to help with that, if you can imagine how unusual that is. But three days before we were going to execute that writ, he threatened all his neighbors with a knife, and then, you might have saw it in the newspaper, then, he ended up assaulting two St. Anthony police officers as they arrived. So mental health, biggest issue that we have, there's no doubt. You know, I've been at this for a while, since 1977. We've never seen the mental health challenges that we have now. John, when you're up here, you can try to take a shot at that question, too. Any other questions about crime? For speeding? Well, I mean, we're pretty good. We're not perfect. You know, State Patrol's got primary responsibility for freeways and highways, but our deputies do like to jump in there. The biggest problem we have is when the racers are actually out. Yeah, well, we've done a really good job of telling the racers, stay out of Ramsey County. And the reason that they stay out is we seize their cars. There is a provision, if they're breaking the law, that we can seize their cars. So we have several seized Dodge Chargers and Challengers sitting in our impound lot. And that's the biggest thing they do not like. They don't like tickets. They don't like getting arrested, but they really hate getting their cars seized. So, and if you listen to Live on Patrol when I'm out there on Friday, I have direct conversations with these young kids and their racers. Just tell them, don't come to our county. They've been sneaking back into New Brighton. There's a spot up in New Brighton that they snuck back to two weeks ago, but by and large, they're... I hate to say it, they're afraid of us, which in this case is good. Well, it's good that you tell me about the buzz bikes, because that's something I'm not really clued in on as well. So that's a big issue, huh? Really? All right, I appreciate that. It's good to know. What else? Well, for the most part, it's the same in Ramsey County, but there are new initiatives being developed where social workers can be sent to certain types of calls. Some cities have been more aggressive at that than others. Some people believe that police officers don't need to be at most calls. I'm not sure what the magic number is, but it's far less than 5% in my estimation of calls that police officers don't need to be there. Because the problem with the social work issue, which they're great, they're really a great resource for us to have with us, the problem is, is that the mental illness of many of the people when they arrive is such that you can't predict where it's going to go. So yes, there are new emerging strategies about sending out a counselor, a social worker, maybe a suicide prevention person. We get a lot of, you know, suicide calls, attempted suicide calls now, that we'd rather hand off to someone who's an expert in that, but if they have a weapon, we have to go there with them anyhow. You can say that, and that'll probably work, but I don't know what the... The comm center, the communication center, isn't under our supervision. They set policies independent of us, and they try to manage 17 different communities at once. So I think if you tell them you want a police officer, they'll send a police officer. But you are gonna see more of that in the future. Minneapolis is exploring that now, where they're gonna have a number of people dispatched that aren't police officers, partly because they're so shorthanded. You know, it's really the issue. Somebody else? Yes, sir. Ghost guns are making a big, big... They're having a big increase. Guns with switches, which make the gun an automatic weapon, there's a dramatic increase in that. Even in the last two years, the number of switches on the street has increased dramatically. We had five of our local car thieves in St. Paul that went to the Mall of America. The Mall of America has stationary license plate readers on their parking lots. The car was stolen, so the Bloomington Police Department knew that the car was in there. They went there, and the five kids ran from the car. There was a ghost gun in the car with a switch. This is just last week. And another ghost gun that was thrown in the garbage can in the parking lot. So we're seeing them, ghost guns, on a weekly basis, and we're seeing switches quite regularly now. A switch is a small piece that attaches to the slide of the gun that causes the gun not to reset, but instead refire. So it takes a, you know, 30-round magazine and delivers it in five seconds. It's extremely dangerous technology. One thing I would say about this weather, you mentioned the weather, and I have a long history of this. When I was working in the St. Paul Police Burglary Unit, there are going to be a large number of thefts from autos in park parking lots. We get it every single year. And people will watch. They'll sit in a car, or at Como, they used to sit on top of the hill, and they'd watch women come to the park for a walk. And Como's a mile and a half around, right? And we have Tamarack and other paths here, but it applies anywhere you go. Vadness Park, Sucker Lake, et cetera. We get hammered every April. And because the weather's getting better, guaranteed, we're gonna get hit again. Well, what they'll do is look for... If a woman goes on a walk without her purse, where's the purse? It's in the car, right? And they're going for those credit cards, checks, whatever else is in that purse. So men usually have their wallet in their pocket, but they will wait for women to leave their car and go on their walk. And I try to warn people every year, just take your stuff with you. Don't bring it to the park. Just take your car keys with you, because they are going to try to break into your car and steal your purse. It's the number one thing. And the other thing I'll just say, and it doesn't happen much here. I know every time the weather hits 75, children are falling out second-floor windows. It happens every year, and we always say, you know, people leave because they don't leave the screen down. So just remind your friends and neighbors that when you open the windows, if you got little kids in there, pull the screen down. So that's our seasonal protection. Yes, sir? Yep. Yes. Yes, well, we get alarms over there in that new development area on a regular basis. Andre, I don't know, you want to comment on that at all? Any other questions? Yes, sir? We had about a 5% to 10% increase in Ramsey County, which isn't the highest, and it was about the same that we see. But obviously, anytime violent crime goes up, the applications for gun permits to carry goes up as well. But we didn't see a dramatic increase this year, in part because we think, frankly, it's pretty safe on the eastern side of the river. I have to tell you that. It's gotten a lot safer. But you see the reports in Minneapolis, if you watch it. I just, you know, I feel bad for that. Chief O'Hara is a good person, but he's got his hands full over there. Anything else? Well, feel free to call me anytime. Just call my office and, you know, leave a message. I'd be glad to get back to you, and we enjoy working with Chris. And so anything you want to ask there, board members, navigators? Mediator? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the invitation to be here with all of you, just for me to come up here and have an opportunity, just to thank you for the opportunity to serve in this county. I've been the county attorney now for, I think it's about 13 years. I started in 2011. And it's been the greatest honor and privilege of my life to try to come up with solutions. And we've got a lot of complicated issues lately. And, you know, I was listening to what the sheriff was talking about, and I want to just tell you that, you know, everything that he talked about in terms of, like, Ramsey County doing a lot better around addressing some of the crime issues, that is so true. In fact, on a pretty regular basis, we get contacted by other jurisdictions around the country wanting to know, you know, how did we reduce so drastically the auto thefts in our county? How are we, why are we doing so much better around the sexual assault investigations? And the bottom line is this, it's all happening because there are committed people who are working together. You remember when we kind of experienced that uptick in violence, probably starting at about... I don't know, I think I kind of started feeling it about maybe April, February, around that springtime of 2020. And it was just something that we were experiencing carjackings, and that was something that we never really tracked before. We never even had to count them. And it was a scary time. But I think at that moment in time, we were kind of at our worst in our ability to solve crime, because it was so confusing. And I remember a lot of times, you know, a city council member from St. Paul would get some complaint about a carjacking or auto theft, and, you know, it would be easy for them to maybe just deflect that to the police, then the police might deflect that to me, and it was just easy for me to deflect that to the judge. And we weren't really accomplishing anything, but through some really good conversations and good people, people like Sheriff Fletcher, coming together and having some of those hard conversations about what do we need to do? Because the problem, I think, in this country is that we have a lot of elected officials who want to poll, and they want to try to solve things, but oftentimes, we don't poll in the same direction. And when we do that, we're so much more powerful. And so Sheriff Fletcher talked about some of those hard conversations that we had with just some of the young kids who are committing these crimes, right? And what do we do about that? And so, you know, we could talk about in 2019, I guess our county board decided to close Boys Totem Town for a number of reasons. And I'm not gonna go into whether that was a good thing or a bad thing, but that was a decision that was made before the pandemic. But through a number of conversations and listening to what the judges were telling us, and what they were telling us was, they just don't have any options other than sending them to Red Wing, which was the state correctional place for young kids, or electronic home monitoring. And everything in between just doesn't really exist for us. It exists on paper, but oftentimes, the placements where you can't leave, where there's intensive therapy, they're out of state, they're in greater Minnesota, and they simply don't want our kids. Maybe because our kids were there before, and so we've had difficulty finding that placement. So we recognized that just internally within Ramsey County, we needed to have some conversations about what we needed to do to have some more options for judges so that we could have intensive therapeutic types of residential treatment for these young people. And then we also learned something, too. You know, it's really hard to be a parent to teenagers, and there's a lot of mothers out there that we met, and Sheriff Fletcher could talk about all the people, the conversations that he's had, but there are families out there that are desperate for help. And so we all came together and came up with a comprehensive solution, working with the business community on a bipartisan basis, went to the legislature, were able to get $10 million, $5 million for the construction of some of these intensive therapeutic homes for youth, and some additional services for families and for reentry, all of those things that were just desperately needed. But all of that came together because we all decided that instead of trying to blame each other, that we'd come together, listen to one another, learn about each other's problems and challenges. And I think we're on the road to building out some local solutions on that. On the auto theft front, so true. I mean, we've had massive reductions, and we're the only county in the state of Minnesota that has reduced that far. So this is not, like, we could compare ourselves to St. Louis County or any other county, but we've had massive reductions. And the reason why, and Sheriff Fletcher said, he has to catch the kids that are doing this. And we have been able to do that. In fact, our carjacking clearance rate, the sheriff's office clearance rate is probably about 30%, if I'm not mistaken. That's like the best in the country. But Minneapolis's clearance rate, 2%. So investing in making sure that we have enough police, making sure that we have enough investigators, prosecutors, and judges, everybody coming to the table about trying to get to solutions. It's been a hard time during those last few years, but it's been also very rewarding, because I know what we're capable of as a community when we come together. I was just looking at some data today around, one of the things that I'm just really passionate about is doing better around sexual assault prosecutions. When we did a study and a report back in 2018, we talked about how a lot of these cases... we talked about how a lot of these cases just weren't coming to the prosecutor's office. And then if they did, we didn't charge a lot of those cases. But with the cases that we did charge, we won in court all the time. In fact, our conviction rate was really high. We never lost in trial. But we weren't taking the right chances on certain cases that needed, where we needed to investigate more and do right by the victim who was harmed. And today, for the, just the last three years in a row now, our charging rate is above 50%. And we've had a doubling of those presentments from law enforcement across the county. So there's just a lot of exciting things that are happening. And I just feel grateful to be able to be in partnership with people like Sheriff Fletcher, other law enforcement agencies, our judges, our social service workers. There's so many entities and agencies, and also you, the public, that if you're a part of the solution, I think we can accomplish good things. And so our, we're not going to stop at trying to come up with those solutions just because crime is a little bit down. We have to be vigilant in making sure that we have the resources, have enough investigators, have enough prosecutors, and continue to collaborate and work together and do everything that we can to get all of you the outcomes that all of you deserve. So thanks for listening. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Oh, thank you for that question. Yeah, so that's another thing. See, one of the things I love is the, just the opportunity to be able to try to solve challenges and bring people together. So back in the fall of '23, I convened all of the superintendents, and including Northern Dakota County, to the table because we've got a huge problem in our state and in this nation. Chronic absenteeism has doubled. We also have a problem with kids that are in school who aren't in class. And I think one of the biggest problems that I learned from people on the CAT team is that a lot of the kids who are doing the most violent crime, the kids that are engaged in the carjacking, when someone like Kyle Williams will ask, where do you go to school? The answer oftentimes is, I don't go to school. And a lot of things fell apart during the pandemic. So a part of, you know, that work around the truancy and the absenteeism, but also just kids that have just literally disappeared. I convened all the superintendents to kind of collate all of the data. And guess what? Everybody has this huge chronic absenteeism problem. We talked about kids who are in school, but they're, you know, maybe doing drugs in the bathroom or whatever it might, they're not in class, okay? And so one of the things that we, then we engaged the Department of Education and the governor's office about trying to get more resources for the schools to maybe even try to get them the resources to bring more resources and community members into the school to have adults in our school buildings and also to figure out a way to get that data. Because the data exists. We can actually figure out where, if the kid is not enrolled in school. But nobody's in charge of that. That's the problem. And so hopefully, by the end of this legislative session, we'll either come up with a legislative solution or I think it just can be done by executive order. I think the governor or the department can just say, this is what we're going to do. These are our responsibilities at the state. These are your responsibilities at the school district. And then let's go and find these kids and figure out ways to get them back engaged in school. One thing I can tell you too, Sheriff talked about, you know, when we see people who are committing crimes, oftentimes it's because of the drug addictions, it's because of mental health. Another thing that's a trajectory to being in prison or just criminal behavior is just having positive caring adult role models in your life. The less you have of that, the higher your chances that your trajectory is not going to be good. And so schools is that infrastructure for our community. It's a way that our community shows up and we have positive adult role models for kids. It's for an eight-hour period. So that part of our community, our schools, has to be strong. And it really needs all of your support to do everything that we can to connect those kids to just activities and positive adult role models. And oftentimes, the kids that we deal with, they don't have that at home. And so oftentimes, they're running from that or there's something that right there. But there's also a lot of parents who are just, they're struggling economically, financially. They have to have multiple jobs. And so supporting them, I think, is also a big part of the equation. Parents are a big part of how kids will grow up to be adults. I believe that the schools are, that there's a school resource officer from the White Bear Lake Police Department that's there. I don't, and then there's other schools in White Bear Lake in this area, which is the 916 School District. And Sheriff, do you provide SRO service there?
We have, not for White Bear.
Yeah. And then you had asked earlier about guns in the domestic violence context, but there's also a new law, the Extreme Risk Protection Order, a law that just became effective in January. And one of the things that we're doing in Ramsey County is we want to make sure that we don't repeat what happened with the domestic violence law that passed where the judge could order the guns confiscated. I think it took us a really long time to even have like a protocol. And for rightful reasons, the way that the law was written, it just was very confusing. So we want to be really clear so that everybody knows what they should be doing within Ramsey County. So for instance, if, you know, a mental health counselor or someone at the school believes that someone is posing a threat, maybe a former student is coming, threatening to come and blow up the school or whatever it might be, and they have an assault rifle or whatever it might be, that it's clear for what members of the public and family members can do under this law. I want to make sure that Ramsey County is going to be helpful to people who would show up at the front door and say that I'm worried about my brother, I'm worried about this student at this particular school. Because the law does allow for the sheriff or the law enforcement or the county attorney to make these petitions. And so we're developing out kind of a framework so that we have common understandings of what we do when that information is presented to us, how we work with domestic violence advocates. Because oftentimes, in those particular situations, we, police officers will routinely ask the victim of a domestic violence incident, are there guns in the home, right? And we'll be working with those advocates and police to figure out if there should be more questions. That's a part of a lethality assessment. But all of those things could trigger some more actions in the law. I think this law can be a great tool, but we just have to, again, it's about collaborating and listening to one another because there are real concerns about how this isn't going to be implemented. But I just don't want anybody in government to say it's not my responsibility. It is our responsibility to prevent mass shootings or to prevent suicide. If we can do that, we should try. And so I'm going to make sure that we're listening to one another, developing some practices and protocols, put them down on a piece of paper, communicate it out to the public so the people know what they should be doing. So like, you know, like a therapist who might come across this information, what should they do? I want to be very clear so that they understand what to do. Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, well, thanks for that question. That's something that I, it's always really bugged me because I think that is a pathway for how, I mean, if you think about all the guns that are manufactured, right, in this country? And the manufacturers and those sellers know that they're being sold here in this country, but all of it can't be for lawful uses, right? And it just bugs me that we have so many guns in this country. And I'm not saying that we should ban people's right to own them, to defend themselves, to go hunting. But there's got to be just some reasonable ways that we could be thinking about this. And so, and there's so many loopholes. One of them are the, just the straw purchasers. So that would be me knowing that if I just know somebody doesn't have a criminal record, I ask, maybe it's my girlfriend, and I ask her to buy some guns for me, right? In fact, in the Burnsville situation involving the deaths of our first, three first responders, one of, one of some of the guns were purchased through a straw purchaser. And so one of the conversations I've had with Sheriff Fletcher, and this is another partnership that we have, is that we've been putting resources and attention and leadership around raising awareness about the fact that if you don't get killed within a shooting and you get shot, but you didn't die, a lot of those cases never get solved. And it's not because we don't want to. It's just because the resource question about, and it's just, you know, we've got to, those investigators have to move on to the next thing. And so those clearance rates are really, really low. And so we're putting more attention to solving those crimes because if we don't catch the people that are shooting to try to kill somebody, they're going to continue to do that. So we've got to solve those crimes, number one. And then secondly, I think there's maybe some other things that we could be partnering on. And I had the conversation with Sheriff Fletcher the other day about, you know, I noticed that we were able to figure out where the straw purchaser hap, where the straw purchase happened in the Burnsville tragedy. And what can we do here locally in Ramsey County to figure that out, right? And so I would like to put more local resources. Oftentimes, I'll be the first to admit, we just sometimes assume that this is a federal responsibility and they'll do that. But I think it's worth our time to try to, see, because I had a lot of questions from people about what are we doing to find, exactly to address those straw purchases and any other loopholes we could get at. So I think it's worth doing and we'll continue talking about what resources we can put into it. Yeah. One way, I also try to bring people together and think about some of the complexities of all of that, right? Yeah, right. Yeah, and so in September of 2021, there were some agencies that made a change, like St. Paul and Roseville at that time. Actually, Roseville was the first, I think, in the state to do it. And then Maplewood has now followed suit. And North St. Paul will be doing the same thing. And again, I always tell officers, you should listen to whatever your chief says. The chief should be listening to what the board says or their city council or their mayor and their people. And I think values are going to be different. But in certain communities, there's a lot of discussion about just the racial disparities and those types of traffic stops and wanting to ask the question about whether or not they're actually effective. And I think they can be effective. There will be instances and examples in which contraband will be recovered because of those stops. But the research, all this research, by the way, is available on our website. But we actually studied all those traffic stops in Ramsey County. And the hit rate is actually, it's like less than what the national average is. It's like 1%. That's just a really low number. So from my perspective, I don't know, if I was shooting 1% on the three-point line, I'd be on the bench, so. Yeah. Well, I think, you know, Sheriff Fletcher has a whole life professional history on gangs. But so correct me if you are, if you think that I'm wrong. But I think what we understand as gangs and what we've thought about it back in the 90s, it's a little different today. There are maybe more groups. They're certainly not like a commercial, like illicit commercial purpose to steal cars and export them to Africa or something like that. It's, I think there are more small groups of young people oftentimes who lack the social connections that they want and need, and they form these groups. And then, of course, you get young people making bad decisions. It gets contagious. But I think those are the groups that we're dealing with. I mean, we still have some of those names, like the East Side Boys, the Hamcrazies and things like that. But it's just, it's different. And Bob, maybe you, I mean, you're the expert in all of this. Yeah, right, exactly. You guys got to get out of the meeting. I see 2005 preliminary, 25 tax levy. That's by everybody who's here. Hopefully it's zero, right?
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
A lot of important comments. Preliminary tax levy for 2005. And the town finance officer, Tom Kelly, will give that presentation.
All right. Excuse me. All right, 2025 property tax levy. I always like to start off telling you that the township has received financial awards from the Government Finance Officers Association. The one up on the upper left-hand corner is for our audit report or our annual financial report. We've received this award for the 28th year in a row. The one in the bottom middle is for our budget document. We've received that 22 times. And the white one that is up in the right-hand corner is for our popular report, which we put out on our website every fall. That summarizes our audit report. And we've received that one eight years in a row. In total, we're one of 10 government agencies in the state of Minnesota to receive all three of the awards. Thank you. When we do our final budget and levy, we typically do end up lower than what is approved tonight, and that is what this graph is showing. The red is what is approved at the proposed, and then the yellow is what was finalized. To give you an example, in 2024, for the proposed, the residents approved a $5,901,288 levy, and at the final levy, that was down to $5,682,000. The proposed 2025 property tax levy, as it stands right now, we are proposing a $6,535,336 levy. That is a 10%, 10.74% increase from the 2024 preliminary levy, and it's basically based on the 2024 budget and then 2022 and 2023 actual revenue and expenditure levels, plus some inflationary estimates in there. But there are some exceptions to that. The first one, on the revenue side, is our rental licenses and our animal licenses. They are collected in even years. Next year is an odd year, so we won't be collecting those revenues, and so that results in a revenue decrease of about $21,000 for the year. Building permits were pretty much a fully developed town now. We're seeing still quite a bit of remodel, re-siding, re-roofing permits, but those big building permits that we saw in the past have been declining, and so we decreased our building permit revenues down $33,150. Our county state aids, we left at the 2024 amounts. We, I'll be honest with you, we normally do not receive a whole lot in state and county aids. In fact, our state aid has been getting cut the last few years. We used to get about $17, now we're down to about $12 a year in state aids. Our fiscal disparities, which is a revenue sharing in the metro area for commercial development, we decreased that almost $5,000, down to $410,000 for 2025. We're pretty stagnant on our fiscal disparities revenues. It seems like we're in a pattern right now where one year it goes up, one year it goes down, and then the next year it goes back up again. It did decrease in 2024, so we are just plugging in a slight decrease for 2025. Next, on the expenditure side, we did settle our union contract to a three-year contract. It does call for 3.5% cost of living increase on January 1st. And then, we did increase the budget for summer help to continue to help address increased street and park maintenance needs that the township has. Our health insurance, that comes due every, or is renewed every March. We've been lucky so far, we've only been seeing 6%, 7% increases on that, but in the past, we did see double-digit increases on our health insurance. So I did plug a 15% increase on our, our health insurance for 2025. Our park improvement, which is based on our 10-year capital improvement plan and projecting out what the park needs are in the next 10-plus years, we did increase the budget for that. It was $350,000, we're increasing it to $375,000. And again, that's kind of based on, on the improvements needed at the parks. The biggest area for our expenditures, oops, is our public safety area. We just heard from the sheriff. We did, are increasing the sheriff's department budget 15%. It has been going up about 7% to 8% a year. Again, it's one of our biggest expenditure areas, so I'm plugging in a little bit bigger of an increase there because then it gives us a little bit more wiggle room. So again, it's a 15.67% increase. Our fire budget, that's a big, been a big problem. The city of White Bear Lake has been trying to play catch-up from budget freezes that they had in the past, plus trying to replace the equipment that needs to be replaced. We've been seeing 20% increases in our fire operating budget, and so I did plug a 25.8% increase for 2025. We currently are discussing their new facility over there. They want the township to pay $182,316,000 for the bonds they issued to build that facility. We're disputing that, so we have not paid that, but I do have it built into the budget in case it's determined that we do have to pay it. And so, overall, our public safety area of the township's budget is increasing 25.4% and public safety makes up 40% of the town's budget. And overall, our operating budget right now, as proposed, is increasing about 16.18%. So that brings us to the tax levy to pay for all this operation. The first thing I'd like to mention is that we do have three different bond issues that we need to levy property taxes for. The 2025 debt levy, based on the bond payment schedule, is $488,221. That's an increase of $9,289, or 16% from over the 2024. And you see here on the slide, the three bond issues, they were issued for mainly street reconstruction projects. There was a little bit in the 2020 bond that went for park improvements, but the majority of it is road reconstruction projects. And again, the debt levy is based on the bond schedule. Now, another bit of good news here, last year, we were rated by Moody's, and even though we didn't have a bond issue out there, they hadn't rated the township in probably 10, 15 years, so they took a look at our finances and gave us a new rating, and they rated us AA1. S&amp;P, the last time we did a bond issue in 2021, they rated us a AA+. So both Moody's and S&amp;P, we are now one step below AAA. And about the only way we can become AAA-rated is to take over another city and incorporate them into the township. So we got to get larger. So what makes up our property tax levy? This slide shows you the comparison between 2024 and 2025. We have the operating levy for 2025, which is $5,637,125. The fiscal disparities at $410,000, and then our three debt levies that total up to $488,211, which brings us up to the total proposed property tax levy of $6,535,336, which compares to the 2024 preliminary levy of $5,901,288. So what does this all mean? If you, if the town's tax capacity remains at its 2024 level, and I'll preface that by saying our tax capacity, mainly because market values have been going up, has been increasing. Last year, it was about an 8% increase in our tax capacity, but I left it at the 2024 level of $21,149,985. If we apply that to that proposed tax rate, our proposed tax rate would be 28.961%, and that compares to our current tax rate of 24.904. When you apply that market, market, or that tax rate to your market value or your tax capacity, if you saw no, no increase to your market value between 2024 and 2025, you would see about a five, about a $6 to $13 a month increase in your township property taxes for a home valued between $200,000 and $400,000. So as I said before, the township can lower the levy as we go through our budget process, but we cannot exceed whatever is approved tonight. The preliminary levy is our worst-case scenario, and what we're asking you tonight is to approve the proposed 2025 property tax levy of $6,535,336. And with that, I will take any questions.
Got a mic here for anybody who has a question, if you could speak into it, please. I'll bring it to you.
Thank you. I'm Mark Miller, 1229 Birch Pond Trail. I'm always confused about property taxes and assessments and capacities and whatever, so bear with me, but, so what you just said is that if there were no change in the market value of my house, which is, you know, it's going to change because it went up quite a bit this year, but if there's no change based on this, I can look at that range. So automatically, if my valuation goes up 10% again, I can try to figure factor what that means is, all it really means is more tax money. Am I reading that right?
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
As your market value increases, and if our rate increases, like with the proposed levy, it's being proposed to increase, you would pay more property taxes. Now, last year, when we got to the final levy, because our, our people's market values had increased and our tax capacity had increased, our tax rate actually went down. So if you hadn't seen a market, if your market value stayed the same, you would have actually seen a property tax decrease, but most people saw some type of an increase because their market value did go up. And you should be receiving those notices probably in a month, month and a half, on what your value is being estimated at by the county assessor. Those usually go out sometime in April, beginning of May, and there's a process to appeal that market value if you think it's incorrect, one way or the other, I mean. And then, like I say, that market value will then be used to determine your 2025 taxes.
Yep, no, nope, I totally get it.
Um, you know, I do not know that question. I know he has to, or they have to do so many homes in a certain period of time, so they've got to revisit similar homes, like, and I, please don't hold me to this, but it's like every three, four years that they have to look at homes, but they don't have to look at every home, and so they'll look at homes in a certain area and then see what they're selling for and somehow come up with what everybody's house is worth. And that's why I try to stress to people, when it comes to their market value, to pay attention to those notices that come out in the spring because that is going to affect your next year's taxes. And I think there is a disconnect, you know, people see those notices saying, oh, the county assessor just increased my value of my home 10%. I got a 10% home value increase, that's great. And then in the fall, they get their notice of their taxes and they go, holy cow, my taxes are going way up, what the heck's going on here? And a big chunk of it is the value went up. And so, there's that disconnect, and people really do need to pay attention to those notices that they get in the spring as to what their market value is. And you may look at it and say, yeah, that seems about right, and not question it, but if you do have a question, there's a process to appeal it and call and get those questions answered. And they do a pretty good job, I think, of responding to the residents of Ramsey County as a whole to get those right. But you're right, it's, yeah.
And the thing is, is it on?
Yeah.
The thing is, is I live on Otter Lake, right six houses south of County Road J. There's going to be this great big roundabout situation, which I would like to hear what the city has to have. But to me, it's going to degrade my house because there's going to be more traffic, and they're possibly going to take some of my property, or a bike path, or a walking path. So I could always, all the city is, or the assessor, and he might come and say, well, no, I think that's benefiting you.
Yeah.
Can you argue with him?
And part of that appeal process is that they have to hold, they call it like a board review. And I don't know who sits on that panel, but they hear the arguments both ways. And again, they can then adjust your value if they think it is incorrect and so forth. So there is a, a process now. I don't know how well some of it works and doesn't work. You could argue, okay, more traffic in front of the road at your house. Is that a good thing, bad thing? Walking paths, some people would say, hey, that's better than having to walk on the street. So that's a good thing and should increase your value. Others would say, no, it's not. I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, actually, addition on what you're saying. Based on the process that I just did a couple of months ago, which I did not pay attention to my statement last spring, but they were nice enough to come out, like I said, is that you definitely have a chance to make your case. Go with data. Make sure you're not just building your case on emotion. So in your case, you might want to study that, what happened to other areas when they put in roundabouts close to Upper Lake property or any property and you know, and the bike pass and so on and so forth. Because they'll come back with those same types of studies that say, well, no, we show that a bike path is a property increaser type of thing. So, but they're very, I found them to be very open, even in a nonofficial capacity that I did this spring, very open to hearing what the homeowner is presenting. And again, data will, you know, after you get your evaluation in a month or two, make your, make the call or get your data ready to go or whatever, depending on what you see on there. And I believe that they will, as, as Tom said, they will entertain your, your concern or your appeal, whatever. So.
If you, if you call, they could.
They came to mind.
They do come. They do go to some people's homes. Like I say, every so often, they have to do an area. And so they will actually go to some homes. But if you call on that and, and can, can, I don't know the whole process, but they, if you question them and it seems like a legitimate concern, they will come out and take a look at your property and your home and, and walk through the home with you and, and explain the whole thing.
Mike Prudon, 5435 Peterson Road. Not so much a question, just a statement. Some of these are, are county issues more so than related to the township directly tonight. So I just don't want what we're proposing tonight to be misconstrued with the statements you receive specifically related to the county. That's all I want to add. It's just the numbers you see here tonight. When you get that document from Ramsey County, there are numbers unrelated to what we're basically trying to approve tonight.
Yeah. Like I say, the, the levy will be applied to those values and, and so forth. But the real reason for the levy increase is the different numbers I showed earlier, the increase to the police, the fire, our wage increases and so forth. So.
Any else? Then I'll turn it back over to Bob. Oops, oops, one more question, I'm sorry.
Hi, Tom, just a quick question. Kelly Johnson, 4064 White Bear Parkway. I saw a few slides back that our local government aid or aid from, from the county and the state continues to be stagnant or if anything decreases a little bit. What are the reasons for that? And are other area, you know, townships and suburbs experiencing similar dilemmas?
Some of it has to do with the formula that the state uses for aids. Because, again, because our market values keep going up, that's a part of the formula, and so it knocks us down a little bit. Most townships and cities, they get a lot more aid than we do. Our size kind of affects us on it. There's other factors that affect us to the point where, and when I say they cut us, I mean, 10 years ago, we were getting like $17. Every year, it seems like they cut us a dollar. And so now we're down to about $12 that we get state aid. Believe it or not, it doesn't take much to spend that $12, especially when a public works truck costs you half a million dollars. You know, we can go through that money quite quickly.
I think the simplest response is that we're statutorily prohibited.
Yeah, we're just.
By, by being an urban township, we don't, we don't receive it. And we're, we're an island surrounded by municipalities that do. So.
Yeah. Any others?
Then I will turn it back over to Bob, and he can propose the question.
Okay, bear with me for a second. I'll make a couple of comments here. On this issue of the appraised value or the market value, certainly after we moved out here, I questioned the stack, the tax statement. First of all, you're right. Read that statement when you get it from the county. And I, I questioned the value that they put on the home. I was satisfied of the house, but I think they were a little exaggerated on what, what they fixed the price at. So I, I called them and I complained, I objected, and I thought it was priced too high. And they listened and they lowered the, the market value of the house. So it does, it does work. At least there's one example where it does work. So pay attention to that and don't be afraid to call the county and complain. Bear with me for a little bit on this state aid. And I, I think you've heard my comments before on this. But part of the problem, like, well, the basic problem, as Pat was saying, is that the formula that's used to calculate the aid distributed to municipalities is a pretty complex, complicated, convoluted formula. It includes things like home age, number of people living in the house, the market value of the house. And it's a list of a couple of dozen items. And you go through that and, and it's, it's quite amazing to see the results they come up with. It's sort of a academic exercise for the township. According to the state statutes, that calculation is made and it's distributed to the cities. It's distributed to the cities in the state of Minnesota. Townships are not listed. It's strictly the cities. Next door, the city of White Bear Lake, they have been getting over a million and a half dollars a year of local government aid. Like Thomas said, granted, we're less than half the population, but a million and a half dollars next door and $12 here. Anyway, just comments.
Thanks for bringing that up again, Bob.
Yeah, I'm getting tired of hearing me say it too. All right, getting back to the agenda. The next item on the agenda is regarding the proposed 2025 preliminary levy. And we're looking for a motion to approve the township proposal for 2025 preliminary property tax levy Is there a motion from the floor? Is a motion? Is there, oh, who made the motion? Okay, is there a second? And you are? Okay, motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. Those in favor of approving that preliminary levy, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. It's approved for you, Tom. All right, next item on the agenda is to announce the location for the special town budget meeting. Right now, that is scheduled to occur on December 3, 2024, 7 o'clock at this location, Heritage Hall. And in the event that that date doesn't work, snow it out, lizards, whatever, there's an alternative date of Thursday, December 5, December 24th, December 5, 2024, at 7:00 PM.
Oh, no, it was the.
It's what?
It was set last year at the.
Oh.
At the last year's budget meeting.
I'm sorry, so we're just announcing that?
Yep.
All right. But then we do need, my apologies on that. But we do need to set the time and location for the 2025 annual meeting. And that is scheduled for Tuesday, March 11, 2025, 7:00 PM at this location, Heritage Hall. Now, is, now is there a motion? Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Is there any other business? Yes. I'll defer that one to Pat.
As of right now. Her website has a press release on it. And then I just told you. Has those conditions changed? Yes, actually. Daily. There's also a link on our website. The threshold is 9235. Love that. Love that we're supposed to infer our settlement cost. I'll let them chat. They decided.
I would indicate that, okay, there was a hearing. Here's how it worked. The DNR was required to amend all the permits within a five mile radius of White Bear Lake. They did that. Each holder of those permits had the right to challenge that amendment, which everyone did, including the township. The township settled before the hearings were to start this last October. Number, North St. Paul settled. And actually, Amonti, I understand, settled as well. A number of them settled. And the only issue remaining, well, those that didn't had, had all the issues, you know, opposed all the issues. But in reading all their post-trial briefs from the hearing, and by the way, this hearing was not before the district court. This hearing was before an administrative law judge because any amendments to the well permits were, would have been heard under the administrative rules of the state of Minnesota, which meant they were heard by administrative law judge. So White Bear Lake, you know, was one of the people that carried, decided to carry through with the hearings. So did Hugo, Lionel Lakes. And I think that was about it. Everyone else settled. The only issue was basically, you know, the irrigation ban. That was the big one. And we'll see what the, what the appellate, what the administrative law judge rules. That ruling will come out, well, the thing now was, okay, the, February 15th was the date that they had to apply, send their last set of briefs in. They had, and the, and the appellate, and the judge had 90 days from that date to rule. So that would make it, I think we figured out, May 15, approximately when they would finally get a, issue a final rule on that. That can be appealed too. But the point is, almost everyone, well, agreed to all the terms. The only one that really was, you know, was, was being challenged was the irrigation ban, and I don't know how well that's going to go. I mean, after, to be perfectly honest, in reading the briefs, I think the state is going to prevail on that as well. And just let you know, those hearings lasted, I think they had, well, they started in, I think it was October 20. And they didn't finish up their hearings until December, I think it was December 15. They weren't hearing, every day was not a hearing date, but they had hearings all for basically a month and a half. All that in. I, this is strictly my opinion, but I think the state's going to prevail. So it was not a, my opinion, and based on my, my advice to the town board was to settle the lawsuit. And we're not the only ones that, you know, we settled it. North St. Paul settled. I think Amonti and I settled. Almost everyone settled except for a few. That's a good point. That's a good question. Actually, the golf courses, and this is something that, you're right, it's exactly what I was going to tell you. That's what, what they did was this. They, they did, they got an, they settled with the plaintiffs and with the state. And that settlement was approved by the district court. And they're, while they didn't have, while they were not completely bound by it, they did agree to certain terms. And they are, if you'd have to, basically, you'll have to read the order that was, that's in the district court file. And I'll tell you what it'll do is I will pull that out. It's a little more complicated than that, but you're right. Basically, the main thrust was they had to adjust soil moisture. They, they had to cut back irrigation of the greens. Because the state and the plaintiffs, remember, we were defendant in that case. The state and the plaintiffs agreed to settle it with the, with the, with the golf courses. And they, and, and so, and the court approved the settlement that they reached. So not, I will tell you this. The attorneys represented the cities, and I was one of them, were not happy with that. But we can't stop the, we, we cannot stop the state or the plaintiffs from settling with any of the defendants. And that's what they did. That's a good question. It's a very good question. I mean, that's the main reason why we spent, understand, this case started in 2013. Oh, yeah. It's going to go on that long. And that was one of the main reasons why the town board decided to get in, get themselves involved in that lawsuit, unlike some of the other cities. White Bear Lake and the town were the only ones that decided to get involved in that lawsuit because we all saw the handwriting on the wall, which is the DNR could settle for anything they wanted. We wanted some say in it. Through your representatives, yeah? Well, it's not as bad as it sounds, but it's not great either. I think what we'll probably, we should probably do is get a copy of that court order and put that on the website so you can all read it. But you're right, I mean, that's, yeah. Because. Yeah. That's a good point. See, here's, here's the only reason why these permits are, well, the reason why this town's permits and the, and the. the reason why this town's permits and the permits for these golf courses are involved, because under state statute, DNR has jurisdiction for all wells that pump more than, that pump 10,000 gallons or more per day. So if the wells below that, state has no jurisdiction. And all those golf courses, the other wells pump more than 10,000 gallons a day. So that's why they're involved. In fact, the milk plant right over here was, Supudo was the defendant in that action. They also settled separately too. Another thing that grated on a lot of the attorneys, the municipal attorneys involved. And we weren't, I don't think, I think if you checked, you'd find that most of them are not happy with the way it was handled. But there's nothing we could do about it.
What, what does that mean? That the, in colloquial thing, does that mean the irrigation ban will be hard cast? Okay.
Yeah. No, it's the state, yeah, yeah. Again, the irrigation ban was all part of the amendment to the well permits issued to the township as a result of the court, the court order from 2007, no, no, 2000, yes, 2017. And this case has been going on for well over a decade, and I don't think it's over with yet. But there became a point in time when we were spending, when it was my opinion, the town was spending money needlessly on a lawsuit that wasn't going to change. And...
So, direct response to your initial question is that we're going to be amending our current ordinance 16, which gives structure to our irrigation and how we manage that probably here in the next one or two town board meetings. So when that is amended and corrected to reflect the settlement, we'll be posting that, and that'll give you some pretty good guidelines. But the other thing is too, is once we get into the irrigation season, yeah, as things change on a day-by-day, week-by-week basis, we'll be updating it on our website.
Component of the court order and the changes in the well permits was the one that the town board fought the hardest on. But it became a point in time when there was just no point in fighting anymore. But I understand completely what you're saying. Having sat through that for the last...
10 years?
No, 12.
It is. I would call it irritating.
Hi again, Kelly Johnson, 4064 White Bear Parkway. Hearing the talk about the possible irrigation ban based on whatever the lake level is of, for White Bear Lake. If it falls below 900 some feet above sea levels, at the... 923.5 feet above sea level, what triggers that? Will that mean those homes that use township water, that who don't have their own wells, does that mean they will not be able to water their lawns or wash their cars? And you mentioned some of the other businesses in the area, the golf courses, you know, the Supodo milk plant, such like that, maybe even car washes. How does that affect us as homeowners versus these commercial entities? Will we be able to water our lawns?
Good question.
Adonis Heights fought it all the way through, you know, they were a part of the hearings. And their big argument was the car washes that all the, all the car dealerships within, were through in the jurisdiction of Adonis Heights, that's affecting their water level. So yeah, no, that was a big point. And so, yeah, I mean, it's, as here's, keep, keep in mind that the way the settlement is reached is we have to, we can't pump, we have to pump no more than 75 gallons per day per citizen residential, but 95 overall. So 75, no, 90, 75, 90. So as long as we stay below 90 gallons per day per capita, fine. But if it gets above that, we got a problem. And by the way, that's not one year, it's a three-year rolling average. That's one, your board chair, Ed, came up with that idea of doing a three-year rolling average. Because, you know, the fact is drought, rain, who knows what's going to happen? Just to use one year in isolation is wrong. You should do it over a three-year rolling average. So that's one of the things, that's one of the terms we inserted in the whole settlement. And it was, Ed came up with it.
Pat, I think we have one more question.
We're back here.
I was just going to ask about observation. You go by White Bear Lake, on Lake Drive right now, and it's way, way down, and this scares me. So that's all I was going to, I wasn't going to say anything besides that.
And we're not off to a good start just because we didn't have any snow melting into the lake this year.
Just the lake.
If my neighbor with a sprinkler system decides to water at midnight, I mean, how are you guys going to enforce this within the township?
That's a good question, and I'm glad you asked it. We are hiring a conservation community officer to go around the township this year and record who's violating our time parameters and day parameters. No, no, no. He, or he, she has to witness watering going on outside of the allowed times, at which point you'll, step one, get a warning. If you're spotted violating, again, it's $100 fine. And if you're spotted violating a third time, it's $500. So we, this is going to be a trial and error year for us. We haven't done this for, guys, how many years? 10 at least?
Well, I water... I water my yard with, with a well, and it's only hooked up to the front spigot. So when this lady or man comes to my door, and am I going to have to prove that I... Can I, can I go and make sure that I am updated to that? Who has that?
Yeah. Just let us know at our main offices. We'll get you in our database. We've got one already started. 1281 Hammond, that's our, right next to Polar Lakes Park. Polar Lakes Park. Hammond, yep.
One more question here?
One thing you can water whatever you want is your garden. That doesn't include the lawn or anything. I called up township long time ago.
Gardens? Trees? Yes. All that remains in place. Correct. You should be using a hose or whatever else.
Okay, so Pat, you're going to use the town website?
Yes.
And we have the news and views section in the White Bear Press?
We do. We have a Facebook page, we have a Nextdoor account. We'll be on all of that stuff coming up.
Okay, so you'll be...
The initial press release is already on our website, so. It outlines all the rules and regulations right now. Ordinate 16 should be updated here within the next two weeks.
And all that will be published for residents to see?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. Is there any other, are there any other comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? We are adjourned.